Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the April 7th meeting. I'd call this meeting older and ask Mr. Slade if he would, for word of prayer.
Father, we're so thankful, you know, to be able to come together first, foremost, before we start our meeting. And thank you for your presence here with us today. And Father, we invoke your blessing on our time together. We ask for your wisdom to be given where it's needed, Lord, so that we can make good decisions. Father, thank you for this community, the safety of the people who've come together to participate in their government. Father, the kindness, the courage that we see in our fellow man. Father, this place that we call home, I thank you that you have given it to us and blessed us and given us resources. I pray that we would be found worthy of what you've provided to us. Help us to do our best today to find solutions to problems, Lord, that benefit everybody in our community. And we thank you again for the privilege that we have to do that in Christ's name.
Amen.
Turn our phones off.
Under public comments, uh, maybe the first two was not here. Do we have a Bob Carey? Is he here? I don't believe he is. Oh, business.
I'm making motion to approve March 17th and April 3rd.
Second.
Brad made a motion, Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda. Does everybody have time to look over the consent agenda? I have a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Well, Mr. Caroline Gilbert. Okay. Caroline not here?
Can you do it now? This is Stacy McNit, she's covering for Caroline.
Good morning. Okay, um, item A, sorry, I have a code. Authority to void the homestead chargeback for PIN 72165-1. This PIN has been dismissed for the Mississippi Department of Revenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Brad seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, authority to void the homestead chargeback for PIN 67742-1. This PIN has been dismissed for the Mississippi Department of Revenue and the chargeback amount has already been paid and wanting to be refunded to the owner.
Motion, go ahead.
Scott made a motion.
Second.
Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we can get Miss...
While you're there.
Yeah, we can get Miss Stacy to come. Oh, you're already up here. Yeah.
Yes, please don't get me for impersonating anyone.
Okay.
All right, item A, petitions to adjust the 24 homestead exemption supplemental roll.
Motion approved.
Second.
Brad made a motion, Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, requesting authority for change of assessment on 23 and 24 real property assessments.
Motion to approve.
I second it. Steve made a motion, I seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, authority to void 23 tax sale, PIN 14812, and no other receipt generated. This PIN was acquired by the Pearl Public School District and should have been 16th section.
Motion.
Second.
Scott made a motion, Steve seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Glad you could be with us, Jake.
Glad to be here.
Yep.
Sitting in this tiny chair.
I'll get new chairs.
Oh, I didn't...
They sit on a bucket.
Hey, Brian, do you mind switching chairs? Yeah, switch, no, get up, get up.
Maybe you can just raise it up.
He'll raise up. We apologize, everyone.
Pardon the interruption.
Look.
All right.
I have to look out for my pal.
All right.
I need a lot of help.
Back to regularly scheduled programming. Okay, item D, PIN 87278, was titled in the Mississippi Rural Water Association, Inc., for 24 tax year and should have been exempt. This was a new property that they purchased. A request for the Tax Collector's Office to void the tax statement for the 24 tax year and no other statement generated.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E, PIN 85978, was double assessed for 23 tax year, so we're requesting authority to void the tax sale and to refund any tax sale purchasers and request that a corrected tax statement for 23 be generated by the Tax Collector's Office.
Motion approved.
I second it. Brad made a motion, I seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F, PIN 49996, was erroneously assessed, so we're requesting authority to void the 22 and 23 tax sale, refund any tax sale purchaser, and request that a corrected tax statement for 22 and 23 be generated by the Tax Collector.
Motion approved.
Second.
Brad made a motion, Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And item G and H, um, if we can take those together, it's, we're basically just, um, making receipt of the request for the Mississippi Methodist Hospital and Rehab Center. Uh, that should have been exempt, so we're requesting exemption for 25. We're putting it, um, we're exempting it off the 25 roll. And then, um, on H, we're requesting, um, I'm sorry, we're just making receipt of request for the Mississippi State Board of Public Accountancy for 25 as well.
I'll make a motion, uh, for G and H.
Second.
Brad made a motion for G and H, Jay seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I recognize that Ms. Caroline Gilbert is here and she is sitting right in the middle of the front row.
Ms. Caroline, we apologize. You didn't step up.
No, we're, we're good.
Do you have anything else? Right, okay. Mike Harrison, a road manager.
I've got road work accomplished for March and scheduled for April.
Motion approved.
Second.
Brad made a motion, Scott seconded. Any further discussion?
The work order slowed down?
Yeah.
Huh? No, sir, they're steaming ahead.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Uh, we can take B, C, and D together, uh, they're both, uh, center point. One of them's District 2, another two are District 4, Barksdale, Stunt Bridge, and, uh, Mineham.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That would be C, D, and E?
C, D, B, C.
B, C, and D.
C, D.
Okay, that's right.
Steve made a motion. Scott seconded motion for B, C, and D. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, we take, uh, E and F together, Comcast, District 2, one's on Spare Way and the other's on One Way.
Motion.
Second. Scott made a motion, Jay seconded motion for E and F. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then we're AT&T permit, uh, for Mandy Drive, District 4.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Brad seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Mr. Tim Parker, County Engineer.
Morning.
Good morning. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Doing good, sir.
Awesome. Uh, we've got one item, it's a subdivision Canal Place, it's a PRV subdivision. Uh, we're recommending approval of the final plat and financial security in the amount of fifty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. That's a District 4, uh, development on Lake Harbor Road off 43.
Mr. Parker, this does not fit the model that we have been using in that area. It's a county. Will you explain how this is separate from, this is PRV and we are looking at the road and the drainage? We don't have a say.
Correct, and so thi- this is really, uh, and we don't, we don't handle the drainage other than the fact of it in the, in the road right away. And this is actually a little bit more unique in that, uh, it's also on an existing road. Uh, so Lake Harbor Road is an existing road, there were some vacant lots at the front of it or vacant lands, and, uh, they've broken it into eight parcels there, so all the county is looking at is the road. Uh, and the road bond is, is to bind the existing road, uh, through the development phase. So, uh, PRV controls the, the building permits, lot sizes, all that is controlled by PRV. The county is just responsible for maintaining the road.
What's the zoning on that? You know the zoning?
I don't know.
Brad, because PRV controls the use of the property through its leasing arrangements.
Whatever.
Yeah, so typically, there's a good, uh, working relationship, a good cooperative relationship between the county and PRV. They do pay attention to your comprehensive plan, they pay attention to your zoning ordinance, and where they're intending to establish a use on leasehold property that might be dramatically different from your zoning ordinance, there's typically communication about that so that we can coordinate that on our map and at least reflect what the reality is. But, uh, but I just wanted to remind us all that PRV controls the use through its leasing arrangements and not necessarily by virtue of what the zoning ordinance may reflect.
This in no way sheds a bad light or anything. Mr. Wyndham and I work very well together and I just want it to be established, 'cause I have had a lot of people call me. They want to know what's going in there and one thing, and I tell them, "Contact the PRV." Uh, motion to approve, we hadn't done that.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Slade? It's your time to shine.
They take all the years in one group.
Let's see what we've got here. We're gonna be sentenced to public hearings for the 15th. I think to Brad's point, we can take items A, B, C, and D as one motion, Mr. Calhoun, if you will.
That'd be my motion.
Second.
Brad made a motion to take A, B, C, and D. Steve seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
For the record, the A was a rezoning request, B is a conditional use, C is a nuisance consideration, and D is a nuisance consideration. So those have now been set. Mr. President, item E is a public hearing on the Daniel and Rebecca Harris conditional use permit. This is at 1816 White Road in District 1. I will open that public hearing. Uh, Daniel and Rebecca Harris are requesting a conditional use permit to establish a small outdoor event venue located at 1816 White Road. Their proposal involves two parcels. Uh, one parcel is a 2.44 acre property where their home is located. The event activities will be centered, uh, at this location. There's an adjoining 15.71 acre parcel that's designated for event space and parking. Uh, property is zoned A1, which permits event venues through conditional use. Mr. and Ms. Harris aim to provide a versatile and inviting space for celebrations such as weddings, parties, and gatherings. Their proposed services will cater to a range of client needs utilizing expansive outdoor area to ensure ample space for guests and parking. Proposed venue is intended to offer a variety of services including photography settings, basic venue site accommodations, serving, uh, serving ware provisions, decor, and design services and flo- and floral arrangements. We've not received any calls in opposition on this matter, uh, and we do have some proposed conditions that we will address to the board. I'd like to walk the board through those at this time, if that's acceptable. So these are, there are several, uh, I will, I'll try to get through these quickly. Uh, we will not allow any alcohol to be served at this location. Uh, there is no amplified outdoor music that is permitted. Uh, instrumental music, no problem, uh, but amplified music would be a problem. Uh, and by the way, those, but both of those are pretty obvious, but they are designed to make sure that this space is in keeping and in accommodation to the surrounding properties. Uh, no events may extend beyond 9:00 PM. Uh, no on-street parking of any kind. Any parking will have to be done interior to the location. No fireworks ever. Uh, no lighting pollution that is allowed onto neighboring properties. Uh, any and all event trash must be collected by a commercial waste contractor. The county's solid waste collector is not allowed to handle commercial event space solid waste. No events, uh, may be, uh, accounted, we cannot account for more than 50 attendees. A strict limit of not more than 50 in attendance at any event. All events must have at least one owner of the property present and available by cellphone in the event that the county is contacted about any issues. No overnight stays, no rentals will be allowed. This property cannot be used for short-term rentals or VRBO of any kind. Uh, a minimum of a million dollars in event liability insurance must be enforced and effective at all times. Full compliance with Health Department regulations regarding any food service. All kitchen equipment must meet strict commercial guidelines, fire suppression and other things. Full compliance with all ADA regulations, since this will be an event space. Full compliance with our building code requirements, uh, for an event space or an assembly space. Uh, and, uh, we are asking, and the board can consider whether or not a cash bond of some kind should be held in escrow uh, to ensure compliance with our conditions. That's a, that's an option that the board could choose. Uh, you don't have to do that, but it's one that the staff felt like could be available to the board if they chose to do so. Some sort of bond that would effectively control the conditions, uh, and to ensure compliance with the conditions. Those would be the conditions that the staff would recommend. At this time, because we are in a public hearing, I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to, in opposition to the Daniel and Rebecca Harris conditional use permit requests. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition on this matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition. As I mentioned, we've not received any calls in opposition. Unless the board has any questions, we can address the conditions that have been suggested.
I, we met with them and I said, I think everything, you know, that went over with seems, seems to be good. And they seem to be willing and agreeable, you know, on everything, so, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it.
Mr. President, do you have, uh, an issue or a suggestion concerning that cash bond requirement? Would, do you want to insist that we have a cash bond deposited with the county to ensure compliance with the conditions?
I don't believe there's any need in that.
All right.
You know, myself.
Then there would be, uh, the other conditions would be, in your motion would include all of the conditions with the exception of the cash bond?
Right.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Brad seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right.
Uh, that public hearing is closed, uh, for the record, if I didn't mention that. Uh, item F, Mr. President, it's a public hearing on the Janice O'Neal conditional use permit. This will be 117 Little Woods Road, this is a District 4 property. Uh, we'll open that public hearing. Janice O'Neal is requesting a conditional use permit to place a 2025 28 by 56 manufactured home behind an existing residence that's located at 117 Little Woods Road. Uh, this property is a five acre parcel, it's zoned RE1, which permits a manufactured home as a temporary or emergency hardship only. Ms. O'Neal's husband's a 76-year-old veteran. Uh, he has been experiencing a rapid decline in his health. Uh, he's been diagnosed with several maladies, uh, and he requires constant attention and care. Ms. O'Neal is seeking to have her grandson and his family, uh, moved into this unit for the purpose of providing care and support to, uh, Mr. O'Neal. Uh, and so, uh, Ms. O'Neal fully understands that in accordance with the county's regulations in these matters, that the minute that the hardship is no longer present, the manufactured home will have to be removed from the site. Uh, we've not received any calls in opposition. Uh, we did receive a call from a neighbor that said that based on the circumstances, he is in favor of the request. Uh, and so I didn't want to mention that. At this time, that public hearing is open. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition, in opposition to the Janice O'Neal conditional use permit request? Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. I would ask for a motion, uh, from the board, uh, and if the motion is to be in favor of the request, then I would ask that there be the condition established on the permit that once the hardship has ended, that the unit must be removed from the property.
I make a motion to approve, just as you stated that.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is a county-initiated dimensional variance request at 224 Avalon Circle. Again, this is, this is a county-initiated request. Uh, Rankin County is initiating, uh, a five-foot dimensional variance. Uh, that is for an existing residence located at 224 Avalon Circle, Lot 12, Avalon Center. Uh, I think I misspoke, uh, that's actually a commercial rather than a residence, so it's, it's a commercial property. Property is zoned C2. A recent survey of the property revealed that the structure itself is encroaching into what would be the required setback for C2. The building itself was actually not built on property line, but built within the required setback, if that makes sense. And so because of that location, we need to resolve that issue by pursuing, uh, what is known as a dimensional variance to accommodate the encroachment and ensure compliance with our zoning regulations. This variance, uh, request is presented to address the condition, the existing conditions and provide a practical solution for the property owner while maintaining the intent of the zoning ordinance. So I will ask, we've not received any calls in opposition on this county-initiated request. I will ask if there is anyone here to speak on the matter of the county-initiated dimensional variance request? Is anyone here to speak on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on this matter. Uh, at this time, it'd be appropriate for the board to take action on this request.
Second.
Scott made a motion, Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes.
Uh, the next item is a public hearing, uh, that we've called for, published notice of. This is on our proposed amendments to the Rankin County zoning ordinance. Uh, we have our friends from CNPDD, uh, Gray and Lindsay are here, uh, to assist us and have been alongside trying to assist us and help us with these. At this time, I'm gonna ask them if they don't mind stepping forward, uh, and walk you guys through. Be, be available for you if you have any questions concerning. By the way, this is probably the third or fourth time we've addressed these to some degree, so you guys have had an opportunity to consider the amendments that have been proposed. Uh, but if you have any additional questions, if you want any additional information, now would be the time to do that. Uh, and then I'll call for anyone that, that wishes to speak on the matter of the Rankin County zoning amendments at the appropriate time. Thank you, Mr. Gray.
We actually need to do comp plan first.
Oh, we do need to do comp plan first. Did I say zoning ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so Ms. Gray, uh, who routinely will ask me, uh, to come and to talk to other folks who are board attorneys and members of, uh, commissions and supervisors, she oftentimes, uh, likes to use me because I never forget that you always do the comp plan first. Unless it's my own comp plan, uh, apparently, so, uh, so Gray's correct, we do need to address the comp plan. So walking through the comp plan changes, uh, and then a- after that, we will get to the zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are considering amendments to the comprehensive plan, adding a growth boundary. Um, this is an urban growth boundary that will just suggest areas outside of this boundary should be slow to develop and slow to have rezoning considerations in that area. Inside that boundary is closer to your municipalities and PRV. So that's where more of your subdivisions and growth should occur. This is mostly in ag areas. The other thing is a clarification in all of our, um, low, moderate, and high-density areas on the land use plan that they must be served by wastewater system owned by a public entity. So those are the two, um, and there is a reclassification of a couple of low-density parcels to residential estate where it was adjacent to or, or close to, um, ag lands. So it made sense to make that a little larger in the residential estate from that standpoint. So those are the amendments to your comprehensive plan that you are considering today.
Gray, as we consider amendments to the comp plan, uh, the, the primary purpose there of a comp plan is, is one, is a guiding document. Is that correct? It just simply lets everybody in the public know, this is how we think that particular growth might occur in Rankin County.
That is correct. So your comprehensive plan, we last visited it in a comprehensive, uh, complete overhaul in late 23, early 24. Uh, it is a 20 to 25-year statement of vision. You use that land use plan, it's a map, it sometimes mimics your zoning ordinance, but not always. But it is what you should use when considering rezoning request. If someone is requesting a rezoning, you should check the land use plan to see if it is in, um, agreement with that document. So that's kind of your statement of vision and that's where, it's a little more broad, and that's where these changes would take place.
Right. So not to put too fine a point on it, if, uh, if a proposed matter about land use comes before you and it is not in agreement with your effective comprehensive plan, then it's a much more difficult approach to how you would adjust your zoning ordinance to reflect the requests that's being made. It, it is intentionally more difficult to effectively do rezoning requests where the comp plan stands in stark contrast to what is being requested. So, for instance, we don't allow subdivision development in RE1A and our comp plan identifies large swaths of property as either rural, ag-based, RE1A. It's a transitional residential phase. It's, it's gonna be more difficult to rezone property to RE1 to account for that. So it's a way for this board to say, "We want to have manageable growth." And I, what I consistently hear from you guys is that we're happy about growth and we do want our community to grow, but we want to have good management over that growth. We don't want to just have Wild West. Okay? So this is the comp plan. Uh, do you guys have any other questions, uh, of Ms. Ms. Gray about your comp plan at this time? All right, let me ask if there's anyone here, uh, with us today who intends to speak on the matter of the comp plan, the Rankin County Comprehensive Plans? Anyone to speak on that matter? Okay, pray you got anything to add on the comp plan, you good?
Oh, good.
Okay, thank you. All right. Gentlemen, I don't see anybody here to speak on the, on the matter of the comp plan. Unless you have further questions, I think it'd be appropriate to take action on approving your comp plan as presented.
I make a motion to approve comprehensive plan for Rankin County.
I second the motion.
Brad made a motion, Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, gentlemen, is on your Rankin County zoning ordinance and the amend, amendments that are proposed for the Rankin County zoning ordinance. So now that we've done the comp plan, we can now move to the zoning ordinance. We got it in order. So Gray, if you will, uh, address the proposed amendments.
Gray, is there anything else you could correct Mr. Slade on?
That is a rare occasion. I really hope not.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
We're actually doing a training that we're gonna offer to, uh, local governments elected and, um, appointed officials in October. And this is gonna be a repeat session and Mr. Slade is gonna serve as our legal advice for. So we're borrowing him for the day, so I hope I don't correct anymore.
I, I was going to serve, now, now we're gonna...
Might be rethinking that.
All right, so zoning amendments, we're making several text amendments I want to make you aware of. A couple of clarifications, um, things like barn dominium, just making it very clear, those have become very popular. We want to make it clear that a barn dominium is considered a pre-cut home in Rankin County. Um, that helps Brian and Ashley in their enforcement of this. Um, same thing, drive-through versus drive-in restaurants, clarifying some of that. Um, we're gonna address parking areas and accessways, making sure in commercial districts... We're going to address parking areas and accessways, making sure in commercial districts, those are well-maintained, you have ability to, to declare that this property is not being maintained as it should be, preventing material, loose material from entering the county right-of-way and road surface and remediation on those. So we are putting some teeth in there. I think I'm also in the club of the sinus and allergy, so I apologize for my voice today. Site plan, we're going to require, site plan on accessory buildings in commercial and industrial uses, just to make sure they are appropriately placed. We want to be careful about accessory buildings in a commercial area, maybe a strip center, and where that placement falls. So we're going to add, add that. Clarifying modular homes and some of the standards expected, there's an engineering certificate. None of this is anything really different than what was being required, we're just putting it in writing. Some inspections of those because a modular home is built to site-built standards, it's built to your building code standards, and so you have engineering certificates that come with them, and so we're just making that formalized. In your ag districts in A1, we have made a clarification there that we're looking for two-acre properties, a minimum lot size of two acres. We're adding accessory buildings and manufactured homes as administrative review conditional uses, just to ensure that things are properly skirted, installed correctly, inspected, meeting all of those requirements, increasing the setback.
Gray, that applies to all ag zones county-wide, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, and then there's some additional special regulations that will apply to ag properties that's different from this?
Yes.
All right, I just want to make sure that you guys, Gray's talking about all ag properties in the entire county right now. There would be a two-acre minimum on all ag properties in the entire.
And that two-acre, we actually did last year in '24. There was just a typo in A1 that still said one acre, so I wanted to make sure we got that in a narrative, whereas the dimensions, it was correct, but in the narrative, it was not. We're increasing the front yard setback to 50 feet, so pushing them back off the road slightly. In A2, those same conditional use requirements, those are both, I want to make it clear, those are both administrative review. So that is something that could be handled by your community development staff. It's just making sure that the standalone ordinances are in, in effect and properly enforced.
Hey, Gray.
Yes, sir.
Real quick, on the accessories, on ag property, so you're saying someone comes in to get a pole barn, a pole barn permit, they can get the permit, but is it still being inspected?
So it's going to depend if it's truly a pole barn where you might have a water and electrical to it versus one that's going to come in, and now we've got a kitchen being added to it. If it's truly for ag purposes, it will be treated as it always has.
Okay.
It's just making sure that some of these, that we don't end up with a dwelling in a pole barn that was submitted as a pole barn, and now we haven't enforced it, and we've got a life safety issue because it's not built to code and, and we've got a dwelling here.
Right now, they signed an affidavit saying, hey, this is just going to be ag-used pole barn.
Right. And that's really all we're trying to do with these, and that's why we're making them administrative review, is just making sure we're catching those life safety issues. Everything else about A2 is going to be the 50 feet setback as well. It's going to be the same as A1. Residential estate, we are adding language to all of your residential, I'm sorry, not residential estate, I'll get to that one in a minute. Residential estate, we are removing any other approved wastewater system. So it's got to be either an individual onsite system where it is on your parcel, it is your septic or, or spray field, or it's public for residential estate.
When you say public, you're talking either county or municipality or?
PRV, West Rankin Municipality, not a private entity that has 50 homes on the same permitted system. Let's see. RE1A, those same modifications are being used there. R1, we're taking out that any other approved, so we're getting rid of those private systems. It's got to be a public system. And then R1, R1A, R1B, da-da-da-da, up, that has to be a public system. You don't have enough land. Those are usually in subdivisions to have a septic or an onsite individual system. So it's got to be a public system. Same, all accessory buildings are going to be administrative review, just to make sure they're in the right place, that we don't have someone trying to bring in a storage unit and it's going to make it a grandmother's suite, something of that nature. That applies to all of your R1, B, C, and Ds, your R3s, which are your townhomes, same things, R4s, same there, all the way through. We're just clarifying those with both the wastewater and the conditional use. And then we are going to recommend the adoption of a new district. It's an overlay district, so it will be applied on top of your underlying zoning. It is just in the District 4 area. Geographically speaking, it's right around I-20 north to 25, essentially your PISGA attendance zone area. The reason for this is we've got significant growth in that area. Infrastructure, drainage, school systems need the opportunity to catch up and to have well-planned, well-managed growth. So we are putting in some additional restrictions in this area. No subdivisions, discouraging any rezoning out of, from an A2, from an ag, A1 or A2 to anything smaller than that. Rural subdivisions are still allowed, so if it's your 10-acre subdivisions. The minimum lot size there will go to five acres. Same setbacks, and that area will have a few more controls on uses as well, just to, again, make sure that that is a very well-controlled area. Now, that only applies in that overlay district that's specifically in that PISGA District 4 area with the five-acre minimums and those things.
So you'll still be, if you're District 2, District 3, District 4, probably District 5, District 1, you're still going to be subject to, if it's ag, you're still going to be subject to the two-acre minimum. But this overlay makes it special for 4. Given the current situation, you got to have a minimum of five acres in District 4. Am I clear with that?
And it will still stay ag?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. In fact, the.
Instead of the 10, for, he can.
The, the design here is that we don't have a rezoning, that whatever permitted subdividing activity is because it meets the five-acre minimum or because it meets the definition of rural subdivision, which would require a minimum of 10 acres, not more than 10 lots. So those would be fine as quote subdivisions, but it's got to be five-acre minimum if it's in D4.
And then the age limit restriction that we talked about, any new manufactured homes or manufactured homes being permitted in the county, it's a seven-year manufacturing date.
Yeah, I really wish I'd reconsidered that, and let's go to 10 years at least.
We have one end of this board at five, 10. We really are looking between five, we, we say between five and 15. Do you want to make a motion?
Can I, can I ask, before we make motions, can I ask to see if there's anybody here to speak on it? Because we hadn't given, we haven't given the public an opportunity to speak on our zoning ordinance amendments as proposed. Is there anyone here to speak on the matter of the Rankin County proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance? Anyone here to speak on that matter? Gentlemen, I don't see anyone here to speak on the matter of the proposed amendments to the Rankin County zoning ordinance. At this time, it would be appropriate for you guys to talk about a motion, what that motion ought to be with respect to the amendments. If I may, I want to clarify, not really clarify, I just want to emphasize one aspect of your proposed amendments that has to do with parking areas, and I, I just wanted to, to highlight that for you. The staff tries to be responsive to issues that pop up from time to time that are important to each of your districts. So I wanted to go over this one. Parking areas and accessways, including service drives and loading areas as required by your ordinance and permitted through your site plan, must be well-maintained, repaired, repainted, resurfaced, and kept in a state of excellent light new condition at all times. Parking areas and accessways that are unsightly, cracked, uneven, discolored, patched, holding or allowing stormwater to collect or pool, and not uniformly maintained as reflected by significant fading, peeling, wearing, or damage, or in need of any significant repairs or significant repainting, are declared to be a nuisance and a violation of this ordinance.
So she said we have teeth in it, what are the teeth?
Yeah, so it's now a zoning ordinance violation and not just a nuisance consideration. And we believe that our friends uphill at justice court will receive potential violations of the zoning ordinance in a mu, much different posture because your zoning ordinance actually has the ability to prosecute people for violations of the zoning ordinance with jail time and with fines. So the teeth are, Jay, that we are making these issues no longer just something to do with a nuisance consideration, they are now a zoning ordinance violation. That, that was one. The other one that I wanted to highlight for you, there's two that, that have come into view and that are being addressed by these amendments that has to do with parking areas. Parking areas and accessways that are composed of any material or substance other than asphalt or solid surface concrete shall prevent any such material from being deposited in any manner whatsoever within or onto the public right-of-way of any street. Remedial actions that shall be taken to comply with this regulation shall include, but shall not be limited to, the paving with a minimum of three inches of asphalt depth of any parking area or accesses serving said properties in order to prevent any loose material from intruding on the public right-of-way of any street. Y'all good with that?
Yes.
Jay would ask, what are the teeth? Again, this is a zoning ordinance violation if it's not complied with. So we hope that some intractable situations that we're familiar with, where we have constant complaints about these things, we can begin to address these more effectively if the property owners understand that they may have to answer in court for a zoning ordinance violation. It's now time, I think it's appropriate for you guys to consider your zoning amendments and take action as you desire.
I'll make a motion to approve the Rankin County new amendments to the zoning ordinance.
I second. Brad made a motion, I seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Yeah, there's, there's one there over here.
Oh, I didn't hear you speak up.
Well, you did once.
Thank you.
I want to thank Gray and Lindsay for their hard work on that and their expert guidance. Always do us a good job, and I'm just very thankful to have them alongside helping us with that. So that's items H and I, gentlemen, that have now been handled. Item J, authorization of the board president to, to execute our standby contract for disaster debris monitoring services. This is between Rankin County and Debris Tech LLC. Quick reminder, this is house cleaning. We got to looking around and realize that we didn't have that agreement actually signed and in place. You approved this agreement last September. So we need to, this is one of those loop deals where we got to get the loop closed out here. So this is, again, house cleaning, you've already approved it, you went out for RFPs on this, you evaluated all the responses, and you selected this particular vendor to handle your monitoring services in the event that we have a major disaster that hits us and we have debris removal activity going on, we got to have somebody monitoring it. And that, so that's what does, this closes the loop here. It's all about getting reimbursed by our federal partners, and if we don't have a monitor in place to get it reimbursed, we're probably not going to get reimbursed. So that's why we're doing this. I just need a motion to authorize the board president to execute that standby contract.
So moved.
Second.
Scott made a motion. Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion?
Yeah, so when will this go into effect?
It's in effect right now.
But would it be a declared emergency before they would?
Yes, sir. That's why it's a standby, Jay. It just stands by. It has no effect, nobody's paying for anything until such time as this board declares an emergency, or the governor does. And then we make the phone calls in response to that emergency. They show up, they do the work, and they're paid.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Those are five-year agreements, Jay, and they have the ability to renew on the backside. It's something that we hope to never have to call upon, but it's there if we need it. Next item, Ms. President, is a discussion of and potential actions to clarify language associated with our resolution that sets our countywide referendum. This board has said consistently that it wants to effectively carry out what is known as a non-binding, non-binding referendum to determine whether or not the citizens of Rankin County are interested in having this board of supervisors form a countywide joint water management district to manage stormwater and drainage within Rankin County. This is a non-binding referendum. Your non-binding referendum would be set for November the 4th, 2025. So we've got plenty of time to get this how we want it. As a part of the resolution, you are establishing what is, in fact, the ballot language for your non-binding referendum. I'm going to read that ballot language one more time, and then we're going to talk about whether or not it appears to this board to be sufficient. Because once we adopt the resolution, we have to communicate that to the election commissioners so that they can prepare themselves for this referendum.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Clarification, this is countywide.
Countywide.
This is a countywide vote.
That's correct.
But what we're looking at as far as the.
The flood part, the stormwater district is the whole county.
The proposal.
It's not the maps that drew out agriculture.
No, sir. This is a proposal that basically says, hey, without any binding conclusion having been reached, you are not determining anything, you are stating your opinion. Do you want this board to establish a countywide joint water management district? Countywide, do you want them to do that? Mark here if the answer is yes. Mark here if the answer is no. And then this board will take that, that response from the qualified electors of Rankin County who choose to go and participate in the non-binding referendum. You will take that information and you will decide whether or not to proceed.
I, I do.
And in what manner?
I do want this to be, to where we hear back from the citizens of Rankin County, countywide. However, if we set it in an almost standalone election where there's not a countywide interest to turn out except for this, I don't believe we're going to get a true hearing from. I don't believe we're going to get a true hearing from the entire county.
Steve, I don't know if there's any way we can do that ahead of, ahead of time.
No, no, no. I realize that. The problem is, there's nothing else going to be on the ballot on November 4th.
That's right. That's right.
And...
We could easily wait one year when we have a countywide.
When we have county participation interested.
And more facts on what's going to be paid.
We have a true turnout. So I've said my say.
There's, there's a number of issues that come to the fore here. There is nothing currently planned that would be countywide on a ballot for November the 4th of 2025. We don't have a countywide election. There's nothing on the ballot for that purpose, countywide. There may be, and I think we've got a couple of district, county district office elections to fill some special elections, like an election commissioner and maybe it's a justice court judge. And so you've got ballot measures that are going to have to be on a ballot, but those are composed of county district offices. So only those districts will participate in that election, not countywide. So to that point, you would be incurring some additional expense to roll out a countywide referendum that's non-binding on this measure. You would be incurring expense. We've talked about that. You're probably going to spend upwards of a hundred grand to roll out all of your precincts, all of your polling places to get an answer on this particular ballot measure, should you choose to pursue. That's one issue. We haven't talked at length about the possibility that because it is non-binding and it's a referendum, you, subject to me making sure that I'm right about this, and I haven't delved into it because we hadn't really talked about it, but there's a possibility that you could select individual polling places within the county to conduct this non-binding referendum, which would not require you to roll out all of your machines to every polling place that you've got. You could designate specific polling places and thereby reduce some of your costs. You wouldn't have to have as many election workers. You wouldn't have to roll out as many machines. You wouldn't have to program as many machines. So there's, there's some potential savings there if you chose to do it that way. Okay? So...
But there again, we're not going to hear from the entire county as to what their feelings are as far as future taxation. And for the reason that we want to do something like this is to hear from the taxpaying citizens countywide. I really think it should be on, even if we have to wait another year, we should hear from everybody that's a potential taxpayer that will be supporting this or not supporting this.
So we need a motion to add to the agenda to rescind the current...
No, sir. Where you are right now is you're discussing, you're discussing and you're potentially acting to clarify the language. You haven't adopted anything.
Well, we already approved for our election in November of 25, haven't we?
You haven't executed the resolution, Brad. We talked about it and you indicated authority of the board attorney to prepare the resolution, but y'all haven't adopted the resolution.
Hey, can I, could we text a poll to every, to every, to the cell phone, like on the emergency management system?
Yeah, so to Sid's point, you've got a website and you have some other ways to contact citizens. I, I don't know that you're going to achieve what Steve's looking for, which is the broadest possible representation of your qualified electorate to give you that answer if you just use the website or if you just use even the emergency procedure that we have where people get texts about different things. I, I, first, I don't even know if, if our system allows for that or enough of that for them to be able... Maybe it's like sends them a QR code that they can then, that then takes them to the website to review that. But we could talk about doing something like that. You don't, the board doesn't have to act because that would not be an official non-binding referendum of any kind. That's just an informal poll. Yeah. But if you want to do a non-binding referendum where you're using your machines and your election commissioners are overseeing a process that looks like an election that, but even though it's not, if you want to do that, you have to do that officially by way of a resolution. You have to authorize it because you're going to incur costs.
You spoke of cost. This, when you said, could exceed a hundred thousand.
I, I'm guessing on the basis of what I understand, if it's countywide, we generally are looking at eighty grand to a hundred grand just to get the machines out the door and ready.
And if we postpone this to the next election, which would, I'm assuming congressional, if we postpone that, we're going to be spending that same amount countywide.
Anyhow.
Anytime.
Yes, sir.
Why would you be spending that? Because the machines are going to be out there.
That's what he's saying.
There'd be no addition. Yeah. There would be no additional other than adding the print on the ballot. And we can continue to refine and move forward in drafting our plan. And we only put this out there for information purposes to us as how the county perceives us moving forward with our, our storm water plan. I say we either don't do the referendum or we plan on doing it when we have a complete countywide election that affects, could affect everybody in the county without, I mean, if this is the only thing on it.
The downside is, is that we're going to put off another year, or actually be three years before we could implement a storm agency. Which would be another three years of us telling people we can't do anything to help them.
We, but we don't have to have the referendum to go ahead with our study.
I don't think we got to support the board to go ahead and enact it now without it. That was the only reason I was pushing to get the vote out there sooner than later so that we could actually do something. But if it's the will of the board not to do it, then let's put it to a vote because I want to be on record opposing it.
I'm in favor of the referendum. I'm just not in favor of almost being a standalone with the expenses, with trying to get poll workers in place and then not hearing, I mean, the referendum is almost worthless if you only have ten or fifteen percent of the population turning out.
Well, I hate to tell you, there ain't a whole bunch more than that in a regular election.
Thirty, thirty-five percent. I mean...
And that's also, just so that we have full discussion on the floor, we, we, your team needs direct feedback from this board about something specific, which I want to clarify with you guys. As with any ballot measure of any kind, this board is restricted. You can't, you can't use taxpayer funds to support a ballot initiative. That makes sense, right? You guys are not campaigners from the standpoint of using taxpayer money to go out and try to effectively get a result on some sort of election question. You can't legally do that. And so we needed direction on how is it that we make sure that the electing public knows what this is and understands, at least at a basic level, what this is about. There's an educational component here, which you do have the authority to engage in. You can make sure that the voters understand what it is that they're being asked to vote on, even if it's non-binding. So, so with that, in that respect, your team felt like if you wanted an educational campaign to be out there so that you've got a good response on your question, an educated response on your question, it's going to cost money to do that. That's an additional cost. So what's before you is a request from the staff to either act or not act on adopting a resolution. So if the board is of the opinion that it is not willing to act, then we need a motion to that effect. We, the motion would be to reject the adoption of a resolution setting a non-binding referendum. If the motion is to move forward on that, and that's what the motion needs to say.
My motion would be not to do anything at the moment this year.
I second that motion.
Brad made a motion not to act on it this year. Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion? If we don't act on it, when would you, you want to put it back up or y'all want to appoint it?
But this is, this is, there's five of us. We can vote and see how it comes out and then proceed from there.
So it's clear. Michael's on the ballot next year. All of Rankin County will be voting on Mr. Guest and whoever.
Judges is her only ballot.
No, sir. Judges, not all the judges. The justice court judges are with you guys. The circuit chancery, I believe they are going to be the year after you guys. So we're, we're quite a ways away from judicial, judicial elections. There, there may be here or there, Brad, but I do know that the congressional election will be on the ballot for, for '26. And so that'll be a countywide election. So you, you could have a non-binding referendum for the November '26 election that will not cost extra because you're going to already be rolling your machines out for your congressional election.
All right. All in favor?
What's your vote, Steve?
Any opposed?
No.
Three in favor, two opposed. Motion carries.
Gentlemen, the next item is a discussion of constituent requests for non-emer, non-emergency assistance to volunteer or full-time county fire departments. Requests from constituents to full-time or county volunteer fire departments for non-emergency assistance. I've asked Mr. Grantham and his team to be prepared to address the board. We may have some others who, who can add some additional information.
Good morning. I'm just going to talk for just a little bit of a second and then I'll turn it over to these guys. But basically, just to, to bring you up to speed, we have seen an increase in Rankin County in the state of Mississippi, in the United States for the number of lift assists. And what that means is, hey, I've fallen, I'm not hurt, I don't need an ambulance, I don't need to go to the hospital, but I need somebody to come pick me up and put me back in place. We do that all the time. Justin here has some numbers to prove that point or whatever. However, it's come to our attention here lately that there are a couple of households that are using that to their advantage when they have other means to, to get assistance. And it's a, it's kind of, I don't want to say abusing the system, but it's, it's putting a lot of strain on our fire department to go out and to pick this person up in the morning, put them in the wheelchair, in the evening, go back and take them out of the wheelchair, put them back in their bed. I don't, my opinion is that's not a fire department emergency type deal when this occurs every single day. So I'm just going to turn it over to Justin and let him explain one more.
Will, that particular address he was talking about, I got some statistics on them. I'm going to get Chief Swales from Reservoir Fire to come up here and kind of give an overall. And it's representative of their district, but it's also happening across the county. So like Brian was talking about, these addresses we're going to, obviously, we have no problem going and helping our neighbors out. We want to do that. But these are people that are using the fire department in lieu of a personal care assistant or a skilled nursing facility, home health, et cetera, a non-acute, non-emergent, if you will, situation. If they get in a bind, say they go in a, get in a car wreck and have a broken bone and they are in a, in a particular situation that don't have anybody to help them, sure, we'll go pick them up a time or two to help them out until they can get that little more permanent care with them. And like he was saying, is we're seeing people that are kind of working around the system maybe because they're not getting billed from the fire department. They're calling the fire department and using them as their personal care assistant. So in, in one example, I'll give you this particular address. We looked back until first part of 2023. They called us, and this is in the Reservoir Fire District, a total of sixty-six times.
One, one resident?
One address. This is not, that's, again, this is a countywide problem. This is one particular address.
What, what other means do they have? I mean, that you know of that's...
So the options, I, I have not spoken to this person directly. I know Chief Swales and some of their leadership have talked to this particular person, but this is, their particular issue is representative globally. They have the options and a lot of them due to their insurance situation. Have the ability to get home health or have the ability to get a personal care assistant or sitter, some people may refer to them, or go to a skilled nursing facility. But they would be rather direct. It's cheaper to use the fire department because the fire department doesn't bill. Get the direction. I'm headed there. They, just this year, this particular address called us thirty times, neighborhood of thirty times, twenty-something just in March, twenty-three times in 2024 and eleven times in 2023. The situ, overall situation for this particular person has not changed. They're, as Mr. Grantham said, they're wheelchair-bound. It's not always a wheelchair-bound person. It may be somebody that's feeble, maybe somebody that's elderly. We have some folks that maybe they're neither. They just are a little bit dependent. But we have, we're placing a tax on them. Why is that a, or they're placing a tax on the fire department. Why is that a problem? Well, as, as all of our fire departments are, they're nursing medical responders, EMTs or paramedics. As soon as they walk in that door and they establish a, a patient caregiver relationship, they can't leave until that's resolved. Either the, the patient signs a release form or they get transported to the hospital. So if they respond to 123 Main Street and they're picking somebody up off the floor who might have other means, 124 Main Street right next door has a heart attack, they can't disengage. You have to get another station or another fire department to respond. So it's placing a burden to where we're using our emergency resources non-emergently on, on somebody that's not emergent. Excuse me, whereas the neighbor across the street maybe have an emergency, we can't respond to them timely. So if you don't mind, Chief Swales, if you'll kind of give those kind of district-wide.
I'd be glad to. Good morning. This is really more kind of an awareness, I guess, than, than really requires any type of board action. We just kind of wanted you to know like what's going on and it's a problem. Chief Berry knows we've had this over the years. It's kind of how this started. It's typically in the past, if we get somebody that's abusing it, that's calling over and over and over again, say ten times in a week, and we go there, the ambulance doesn't transport, we would typically file what they call 911 abuse. Certified letter gets sent out to them. It generally will stop the issue for a while. That's kind of how we got to where we're at now. So I actually, I guess the week before last, I reached out to Brian Grantham about filing 911 abuse on this particular address. And we've gone, we've been twenty-three times in the last three and a half weeks to this one address. I just pulled the report this morning. It's, it, it's, it's a lady that's in a wheelchair, mom is elderly, they're super nice, they're super sweet people. Our guys don't mind going, but the problem is it just becomes abusive. It's just, it's just, we're, we're their call. You know what I mean? We're, they, she can't get her from the bed to the wheelchair and can't get her from the wheelchair to the bed. So the first thing she does, pick up the phone, calls 911. And we're just kind of their, we're kind of their call and it's, it's become extremely abusive over time, I guess. Perfect example, last week, they were in there. Like Justin said, they can't disengage. We had a fire call, house fire call comes out. They're in there doing a lift assist with her so my third engine can't even respond to the house fire until this is taken care of. So just kind of a prime example of what's going on. We do this regularly. It's not like we don't. We ran, we ran three hundred and forty-five lifted... We ran, we ran three-hundred-and-forty-five lifted, lift assists last year. So.
Do you have it broken down?
Just lift assists, no transport.
Districts, or where's most abuse at?
It's kind of representative across the county. It's pretty evenly spread in, in some of our rural districts and even more like Chief Swales and more populated. It's a nationwide problem. You can Google it and you'll see like nationwide lift sister of, you know, tremendous amount. Chief Roberts next door, right here at Brandon Fire Department, him and I are good friends. He was telling me last week that one of his battalion chiefs did a research paper on it and their lift assists were up six-hundred percent since twenty-twenty. So this is more of kind of an awareness. I don't know what the real answer is. I almost wish that maybe there was some type of, you know, help that's out there where you could call the number and say, hey, we got this such, such address that we keep going to regularly, and somebody follows up with them. And if they're able to get them help and get them care based on, based on their Medicare or Medicaid or disability, whatever they have, they can line that up for them and help them. That's not something we can do. I mean, we're not educated in that area, if that makes sense. I don't mean they're, we just, we're not, we're not educated in that and how to get them the help that they need. So it's really just, like I said, it's just more of an awareness.
Couple of questions. First thing, thank you for your service, gentlemen. I appreciate it. But you said, how many this year from that one resident?
This, so in the last three and a half weeks, we've been twenty-three times.
Twenty-three times in the previous year?
And you've, yeah, you, I think it's a little over thirty for the, since the start of the year.
Did you see it ramping up? Was it like this, this possibly they, they moved into the area or this situation happened? And it, towards the end of the year, is this all in a six-month period or are we talking over then, almost eighteen months?
They, they, this particular address we're talking about, they live, they've lived here a number of years. In twenty-twenty-three, we went eleven times. Twenty-twenty-four, we only went, we went twenty-three times total. Part, part of that is because she actually got home healthcare brought in. We, we were going and then we were going a pretty good bit and just one of the guys said something to her and she actually brought in home healthcare. About two weeks ago, we were going twice a day, every single day. My deputy chief rode out there and just spoke to her and just very politely said, ma'am, you know, we need to find you some help just so you'll quit calling twice a day for us. I mean, look, the guy, I promise you, all of our guys are like, they're the nicest people. They, they don't mind going over there. But that stopped it from twice a day to once a day. And we're going every single, it's like clockwork. I promise you, between seven-thirty and nine o'clock, we'll be there tonight. So I don't know how she's doing it in the mornings right now. I don't know what, who's helping her go from the bed to the wheelchair. But in the evening times, it will be us. We'll take her from the wheelchair back to the bed. And again, like I said, it, it, this is more of an awareness. This is a problem nationwide. I don't know the answer to it, you know, at the end of the day.
I want to second, second what you said, your point, Mr. Gaines. This is not Reservoir Fire Department being picky about, you know, they, they only want to run these calls and those calls. This is just one example we have of a countywide, statewide, nationwide problem.
Do you see, I mean, and I know you said you're not really educated in all the social things that's out there. But from the ones that you go to the most, do you feel like that there is alternate assistance, whether it's moving to an assisted living or whether it's many different things? But if we have some type of way to slow down or to not just be a lift assistance program.
Yeah, so. There is.
Educational thing. Yeah, I think it would be good if, I mean, just like we got volunteer fire department. You know, if you come up with some kind of program, you know, a number to call, volunteer lift assist, you know, because I appreciate what y'all do. I mean, y'all know, I mean, I have some assisted livings and hey, and sometimes we do have to call, you know, volunteer fire department or the fire department. And, you know, when we get, we try not to abuse it, which I don't think we do. But, you know, on some of the heavier people and stuff that we, we need help with. But if there is, you know, like your volunteer fire department, well, you know, could start some kind of organizational volunteer lift assist if it's non-medical emergency, you know, just like it sounds like that.
Yeah, two things I just wanted to mention, back when I first started EOC back in twenty thirteen, if we had a situation like this, we would go phone and call the Rankin County Health and Human Services, I believe they were, and they would handle it from there. They had the social workers that could get them lined up, get the paperwork done. Because a lot of this is a Medicare billing situation, which none of us are versed in, in that. And so we, of course, we don't have that option now, so that's kind of like Chief Swales was saying, just kind of looking for some direction on that. And then also, if you remember, some of y'all do, back in twenty-twenty, when COVID hit, we came to y'all and asked on the volunteer side, not necessarily Reservoir, to help give our ambulances some relief because of all these calls, that we would just dispatch the fire department only. Well, what we're seeing now, a trend moving upward is they will dispatch a volunteer fire department, nobody respond. So then the protocol is dispatch a backup fire department, nobody respond. Okay, now we're dispatching the ambulance. And so we're still involving our ambulances, catching them up on these non-emergency calls, so.
Let me ask for some clarification from you guys. So we do have an ordinance that provides for a way to deal with nine-one-one abuse, okay? So I want to make clear to you guys, if a constituent calls nine-one-one and it's not an emergency, there is the potential that they could be subject to our abuse ordinance. Now, we're not going to just say, all right, if you do that one time, you're, you're gone. No, if, if it's clear that they are using the nine-one-one system as abuse, what I understand is that they're actually calling directly to the fire department from time to time and asking for assists. Is that right?
They do a little of both.
Okay. So you understand the dilemma that that puts us in, right? They're not using the nine-one-one system to make the contact. They're using a direct line number to the fire department to make the contact. Our prosecutor's not going to prosecute somebody if they call the fire department directly. They're not abusing the nine-one-one system, okay? So we've got to deal with, what do we do about a situation where they're, whether they're using the nine-one-one system for non-emergency? Or they're not. They are potentially abusing the fire service for a non-emergency situation. It's very similar. I went ahead and looked, what are other jurisdictions around the United States? How do they deal with this? And what I find is that there are no ordinances that I'm able to find of any kind, city, county, otherwise, where they are directly addressing abuse of a constituent, a constituent, a voter, an individual. They don't address that. What you find is consistently across the United States is personal care facilities, assisted living facilities are, are subject to an ordinance where if they call for a non-emergent lift assist, they pay. They pay a fee. And it ranges anywhere from fifty dollars a call to well over five hundred dollars per call. It's actually billed to the personal care facility or the assisted living facility directly by the responder. So in this case, you could have a policy or procedure or an ordinance that says if we get a phone call for a list, lift assist, there will be a bill sent. Now, that's interesting in that volunteer fire department, I'm just talking about Reservoir. Reservoir is a full-time department. So I believe that this board would have the authority to authorize Reservoir, but Langford or insert name of any of our other volunteers. I, that's a private, nonprofit entity. I don't think we have the authority or would want to establish an ordinance that authorizes a private nonprofit entity to be able to send out a bill. I, I don't want to recommend that, to be quite honest with you. So you can, we can either use a carrot approach, and by the way, there's a lot of jurisdictions that do this. They've established programs where when it becomes clear to the responders that somebody is abusing this privilege, when that becomes clear, it institutes a process where somebody that's a social worker is dispatched to go and sit down and say, here are your options that are available. It is no longer an option for you to call the volunteer fire department for this. That's not appropriate. You must find an alternative. That, we need that third party who has the ability to know what options are out there to be able to coach these people into finding those other options and not use the fire department by default. That's what we need. That's the carrot approach. And then we need, I think, we need some sort of policy statement or regulation or whatever that says, if you call the fire, if you call a volunteer or full-time department directly for a non-emergency situation and you do that more frequently than this board believes is appropriate, you will be subject to some sort of abuse allegation that would be taken up at Justice Court. It'd be patterned on your nine-one-one abuse ordinance similarly to that. And we would have to kind of walk through what that actually looks like. I don't think any of us wants to be in a situation where we're telling somebody that, hey, we're not coming to help. No, what, what we want to be in a position to say is, we can't come help thirty-six times a month. There's a limit.
Explain when there is a nine-one-one call made. I mean, because I'm, I can already hear a lot of people sizzle, you know, after hour again, why don't y'all just tell them you're not coming back? Yep, get out of the wheelchair. Explain why you don't, can't do it.
We have a legal obligation, obligation to go once we've been dispatched.
If you've been summoned. There's a duty to act.
Now, one thing I do tell, one thing I do tell my guys, especially in this particular instance, because we go so often, is if you're en route to that and it's a lift assist and there's no injuries, then another call comes out, say somebody else in that same district having a heart attack, I want them to divert and go to that one. Because this is a non-emergency call, so they will divert and actually go take the other one. But now, once they've entered the house and made patient contact, they can't leave until they have resolved their issue legally. They can't leave. I, I reached out to Pafford just in this particular instance and just asked them, you know, if we sent them several times, could they bill them? And maybe this would stop it. Like, hey, we'll send you for a week and let you do it and then you bill them. And Freddie had told me, he said that it's not very likely that Medicare or Medicaid would pay. So it's not going to do any good. So he said they just, you know, based off their billing codes and everything they use, that they're just not going to pay for a lift assist only. So I just kind of exhausted that. I think the best option is, you know, if there was a number you could call and get a social worker that could come out there and educate these people and help them and, and, and get them the appropriate help, I think that's the best way. Now, who, who provides that, I don't know. But other places across the United States are using a community paramedic program. That's what they do. I think it was Dallas.
Yeah, I talked to, I have a contact at Dallas Fire Department that works on their EMS side. And he said they've used an approach like that, a community paramedic and, and social work aspect of it. What you said, Mr. Berry, the education side of it, he said they, they educate their patients or their clients, or however you want to refer to them. Hey, these are your options for pay. These are options that you have aside from calling nine-one-one every time. He said they saw dramatic reduction in their, they call them their frequent flyers, but these repeat customers that they see here.
Can they help us with documentation about what a community paramedic system looks like?
Yeah, that's, I've, I've talked to him and I'm, I'm in contact with him, trying to get kind of their policies, procedures, et cetera, just to see what Dallas is doing. One challenge we have is Mississippi doesn't have that set in stone just yet. I think it's coming eventually, but it's not set in stone right now for the paramedic side of it. Obviously, we have the social work already, but yeah, I'm, I'm in contact with him, trying to give what, what does Dallas Fire do? What's, what is working for y'all? Is that something that we can take here to the state level and push that?
We've had some good ones over the years. We've had some call and ask us to fill the dog's bowl, change the TV for them, I mean, you name it. We've had to file nine-one abuse for a little bit of everything over the years. I promise you, yeah, we've, we've done it, so. And again, I mean, that's part of what we do. It's, it becomes a problem when they start to abuse it. And we're their only source of help. And a lot of times, it's people that have no family around, you know, have no relatives that live anywhere near them, you know. I mean, I feel sorry for my.
I totally understand. I have a mother that's aging and she's not in a wheelchair, thank God. She does not want to leave her home. And she lives thirty-five, forty miles. I'm the closest relative. So I can see, I mean, how we have an aging well, the whole United States, but, and these people, some have paid taxes their whole lives. And we do have programs that all of Mississippi and Rankin County have supported. I just don't think we're using them, our people are not using those programs that are available to them. I worked in law enforcement for a long time. I can assure you, some of these people like to call you because they like to see you come in their house. And you're their buddy. You are somebody that they can have conversation with.
Yeah, for sure.
And it's just sad that we don't, I mean, we can't really fill that void that needs to come from a social program. And, and I'm not big on social programs, but for our aging and for this type of assistance, we pay the taxes. Let's try to put them to use. And, and churches, I want to throw that out there. This is a great place that churches can do mission-type work in our county. We don't have to go to another country. And it's also a great place for church ministry. You go there, you meet them, you tell them about your church, and you may go back twice a day. We're just not rea-, our public is not reaching out for some of the things that are already there in place. I guess I didn't come up with the answer.
That's one of the things that's hard to, to come up with.
I am encouraged. If, if we can get some information from how the jurisdictions are making these connections between the person who needs the service and a provider of that service, if we can figure out how to get those connections working. I, I'm really curious to see how is Dallas doing it? I'm not saying we're going to mimic that directly, but we can take some bits and pieces of what they're doing and see if that can be made to work in Rankin County.
But I think we should. And, and that's long-term because of legislation and things like that that you have to get through. But let's think about the church atmosphere. We have the state Baptist convention. We have the Rankin County Baptist convention where most all the Baptist churches are represented. I'm sure the other religions, not religions, so.
Denominations.
Have also where people like y'all could get on their agenda and go tell them what the problem is and see if they're interested in trying to have some mission-type work done in the communities.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all. Gentlemen, that's the last thing I've got. We do have the board executive session.
Mr. Hicks, county administrator, would you like to step to the podium, sir?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Item A is acknowledgement of the twenty-twenty-four monies received from our chancery clerk. It's in the amount of three-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-three dollars, twenty-seven cents.
Motion approved.
Second.
Brad made a motion. Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I know in the past, we've used those monies for certain things. What is, where are you putting this general funds right now?
It was budgeted within the general fund.
It has no direction other than general funds right now.
Item B is approval of change order number one. This is on our Reservoir East ARPA project. And it's to extend the original contract of two-hundred-and-ten days to two-hundred-and-seventy-three days, which is a sixty-three-day extension. And that has to do with significant rain delays that have occurred. And just to note, this is extended days through the end of February. We've had quite a bit of rain in March that slowed them down, so we may have another extension coming later.
How's that project coming, Jack?
Woodman Berry from Benchmark is here, if you'll have me. We do have Woodman, uh, Berry from Benchmark is here if y'all have any questions. Is it, is it helping out? Weren't they done?
Far as I know, I haven't been out there and walked it personally, so.
It's looking good. We just need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the extension.
Second.
Brad made a motion. Steve, second motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Just FYI, the engineer that's responsible for the project always weighs in on these requests for an extension of days and they verify that it's, they're entitled to the extension. And, uh, Ms. Berry, uh, thankfully was able to review and, uh, has agreed that they're entitled to the extension. I, I'm confident to Key's point, we're, we'll get another request because we've had an extraordinary amount of rain in March, so.
Should be able to see which way waters flow. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Have any additional business?
That's mine.
We need a motion going to executive session.
Yes, sir. You're going to be, uh, discussing a litigation matter, potentially in, uh, personnel matter, uh, potentially a land acquisition, uh, for county property matter. There's several bases.
Can I have a question before we go into the session, Craig?
Yes.
Uh, so we have our one site that's a marijuana dispensary.
Yes, sir.
They want to, they've been bought for the third time.
Yes, sir.
And they would like to move their hours of operation from six to seven. What do we need to do to make that happen?
Uh, you've got a, uh, my, my understanding is that they've got a con- conditional use permit that sets the hours of operation, right?
Conditions don't require a public hearing.
Right. So what we would do is simply entertain a motion from the board to amend the original conditions on your conditional use permit to reflect a different hours of operation.
Where's that at?
It's on Old Fenn Road, our only one we have. I don't know, does PRV have any?
One.
Okay.
They just have one? Oh, okay.
I'd like to make a motion to add this item to the agenda, so we, they, new company bought it, they'd like to get it going.
So make some motion to add it. I'll second that motion.
Jay made a motion to add. Steve, second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I make a motion to adjust their hours of operation to close at seven P M. Monday through Saturday.
Jay made the motion, uh, extend the hour to seven P M. Monday through Saturday?
I'll second that motion and hopefully this will allow the people that need it to be to go there and it won't be a need to put another one in.
Hey, Steve, second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? I got one more thing I'd like to bring up in additional business is, uh, reconsider the permit to Southern Rankin Water that we, uh, bring it back up that we voted on last board meeting. Uh, y'all have any, y'all like a motion to?
I'll second that. Add it.
I made a motion to add. Steve, second motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Uh, any opposed? Motion carries. Yeah. Right now, I'd like a motion to approve their permit.
I don't know, you gotta go into discussion on what, why?
Yeah, they were needing, Southern Rankin Waters needing a permit to go up under the road to put some new water line. And they asked for a permit in which it was denied, you know, on their permit. So I was just asking for reconsideration of approving them for their permit to water the road and, uh, what they needed to get their water line, like.
Remind me, what, why were they denied?
Because I got, uh, three votes that said no. Any further discussion?
This, we have these permit requests all the time from water associations or whoever that's in our right-of-way. This particular water association has a civil matter that the county's involved in. Uh, and it is very, very closely related to water lines, uh, and that has not been resolved. Uh, initially, and Craig kind of corrected me, we normally, if we have legal action with somebody, some entity or whatever, we don't take action until that's completed. Uh, this affects the individuals on that water association. They receive water.
Right.
And it's broader than just one or two board members on that water association.
It kind of affects the whole community, you know?
With all that said, uh, I'm in favor of allowing this permit.
So that's your motion?
Well, uh, I mean, I, yeah.
May I add one, just one, uh, consideration? Uh, Steve, this, if, if you're making the motion to authorize it or, see, I was thinking that you may have made a motion.
I was just, Brad asked what all was involved.
I have some, what, what I would suggest, uh, for our purposes today on this particular motion, uh, would be to clarify in the motion that, uh, that the water association will need to acknowledge upon receipt of the permit to enter the county's right-of-way that if at any point in the future, the county requires that the infrastructure that is located in the right-of-way according to this particular permit, if the county requires that that infrastructure be relocated for any county purpose, like an expansion of the road, uh, an adjustment to the road right-of-way of some description. If there's ever a need for the county to, to have that infrastructure relocated for some reason, that it will be relocated at the cost of the water association. We would not normally say or do that for any particular reason with any other requister because it's known and accepted everywhere else that if a utility comes into the county right-of-way and places infrastructure, then if the county needs that relocated, they have to do that at their cost. But this particular water association apparently doesn't accept that as an acknowledged reality. And that's why we have litigation. So I would like the permit to state if there is a need for the county to have that infrastructure relocated at any point in the future, Southern Rankin will have to relocate it at its cost.
I thought our permits did have that.
Uh, they may or may not. Uh, I, I haven't looked at one of our, let me say this too. It's not been very long that we've required water associations to actually fill out our permit requests, right? That's only happened within the last two, three years because it, it's never been an issue. We, we've never had an issue.
But it's listed on there now.
Is, is that language specifically listed on there?
Yeah, I think it is.
To your point, Jay, I probably did address this at some point.
I thought you did.
I think, I think so. But I, I just wanted to clarify for the record that we're going to, we're going to insist that the language that's on that permit be followed.
Right. So that's your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll have to work.
I made a motion.
With Ms. Jessica on the language that she's been listening to.
I, I still like the idea of aborting Gary Williams for suing us and still suing us and causing all the people in that water district to pay more money than they need to for still paying attorney fees. So I, I don't want to, you know, help the guy anymore than we already have.
Right, so I made a motion. Steve, second motion. Any further discussion? I think we just had a little further discussion. All in favor?
Uh.
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 Any opposed?
I guess it doesn't really matter.
Thank you. So we got four hours, one opposed, so motion carries. And just for the record, Mr. Slade, I think you got corrected two times today.
Yes, sir.
In the same meeting. That's unheard of.
Yes, sir. I was due. I think, and just for the record, I think Jay has lost three times today, so he's ahead of me by one.
Well, he started off with a bad chair. He had a bad chair this morning.
I'd like to make a motion to discuss going to executive session for litigation, possible litigation, possible personnel and, uh,
property acquisition.
Second.
Scott made a motion going to executive discussion. Jay, I meant, uh, Steve, second that motion. All in favor?
Uh.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Scott made a motion to go into executive discussion. Steve, second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?